The agenda for this meeting, the only thing on the agenda is the review and comment on the supervisors' proposed changes. Is there any discussion or movement to approve the minutes and agenda?
I'll launch in to accept.
Is there a second?
All right, I'll second it.
I wasn't here, so I don't embarrass you.
Okay. I'll second it.
Dave seconded. To all those in favor of approving the minutes and the agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes and agenda is approved. So, we'll move on to the first order of business then. Close this. So, I have... On the screen, you each should have a copy I provided late last week of the individual changes that the supervisors have asked for. Let me see if I can share this as well for Matt. Joel, are you listening? Could you enable screen sharing, please? Send him a text.
Were you talking to me, Jeff?
Yeah. Can you enable screen sharing for me, please?
Yep, it should be ready to go.
Thank you.
Just text me when you guys are done.
Will do. Thanks. Okay. So, Matt, can you see my screen now with the Word document on there?
No. Oh, I'm joining the meeting now. You're not there.
Okay. No, I'm late. I'll be there in a minute. Thank you.
All right. Good luck.
Right. Yep, bye.
Bye.
Matt?
Yes, sir. Yep, I can see it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. So, first, are there any general questions on what it is that we are doing tonight? What we need to do? Okay.
No, not really.
All right. So, we will get started by, as I said in the note leading up to this, I'm hoping we can get through all of these tonight so that we can deliver this to the supervisors on Monday and then on November 15th, then they can go through and vote on it. So, the first change that was submitted was a change by Mr. Lowberg, and he wanted to change the definition of human-occupiable buildings so that somebody couldn't take a shed and just tow it out to a fence line someplace to try to gain the system to put that shed out there to preclude winter from going in because of some changes later on. So, you can see in red here what the change to the existing definition would be. It would exclude CAFO buildings, and again, there's rationale for that later. And it must be located on land that is not on land designated by the county as crop land for tax use, which is readily available in the tax records and online in the GIS. Any comments or recommendations that the commission would like to provide back to the supervisors regarding this change?
I've got no problem with the change.
Okay. So, Todd, it's getting everywhere. I'm just about to close on the very first change. Todd, did you have any questions, concerns, or issues associated with the change to the definition of human-occupiable buildings? Okay. Next, just adding a definition for the CAFO building. Again, this was from Lowberg. And I just, I took this definition straight out of what Placus County has.
Yeah, it totally defines it.
Yep.
So, I'm fine with it.
You're talking about confinement feedlot operation?
Yeah.
So, in the definition...
Definition of the buildings.
Is in the definition, I looked it up, and I would go to the definition of the building. It's not limited to just strictly confinement, but any livestock operation, like an open front hog house or like...
No, I believe...
A dairy barn.
I believe that is all what you permit, isn't it? It's all the COFOs. I don't think your farm or unit falls under that exception.
And the reason I'm asking that is, okay, is this coming down just to permitting thing or is it coming down to people wanting to get closer to confinement buildings with their own windmills, which shouldn't matter to us? Or is it people trying to keep it farther away?
Well, this is, so, if you look through the changes, you'll see that there's a recommendation to make some changes to the setbacks. And one of the changes that we just looked at was the definition for human-occupiable building. The definition for human-occupiable building would be changed so that the CAFO buildings, which are defined confinement building operation structure, means an animal feeding operation structure that is part of a confined feeding operation. And so, that would be, so that's removed from the human-occupiable building definition, and there's a recommendation for a separate setback specific to the CAFO buildings.
Okay, and I might be splitting hairs here, but that's what's happening anyway. My concern is, okay, you're limiting this to confinement operation, right? Like a total confinement building. I'm worried about the definition of a confinement building versus their own category.
Well, see, that's...
You see, I mean, because when it comes down to setting some of these distances, okay...
So, look at it this way. So, if you start from the most restrictive, and if it doesn't meet the most restrictive, then it goes to the lesser restrictive. So, the most restrictive would be the CAFO building, this definition, right? Confinement operation building, or confinement building means an operation using conduction of confinement operation to housing. So, if his open shed does not meet that definition of confinement feeding operation, then his shed, if he uses that shed, then falls back to the definition of the human-occupiable building.
Okay. That pretty much answers what I meant, because what I'm saying is, what my concern was, and I think you guys are catching me now, is if you've got a couple acre feedlot that's not confinement, but it's a feedlot, or you got, you know, I didn't want it to... Well, say, it's be prejudiced against that versus a regular confinement building.
Right. This just carves out the confinement building.
Right. It doesn't exclude another livestock operation. It's just for...
And Enos rationale behind this, because I asked all the supervisors about the rationale behind this, just because I knew I was going to need to talk to the point. His rationale for this is those confinement buildings are already separated out by themselves typically. They're not part of, you know, somebody's acreage where they're running cattle or whatever.
Well, and they've got to meet their own state requirements...
Right.
For DNR, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it's like Nate Morse's building can be at Nate's, but not at Dean's because of the separation distance. So, all of a sudden, you start limiting those COFOs. If they've got to be away, further away from the windmill, now they've got less spots to go put.
Right.
Right.
So, that's what this...
Well, in my concern isn't having confinement away from the windmill, it's if the windmill's closer to the confinement.
But in some cases, the windmill's there, now I can't put my confinement there if I don't separate it out.
Right. Because I'm just trying to protect the guys that are already there.
Yeah.
The operations that are already there, whether it's confinement...
They get so much, but yeah.
And I think, I really, that comes in later on in the setbacks. I'm just jumping ahead a little bit, but I'm just, that's why I wanted to make sure it wasn't excluding other livestock operations.
Okay. All right. So, the next one is change to property line setbacks in Table 1. Now, each, these are written individually because each of the supervisors is proposing a different change, but all three of the supervisors are essentially saying, "The current property line setbacks don't work. Change those over to residence." Talking with them, highlighting to them that we don't have residence defined in the ordinance, but we did have the human-occupiable buildings, and we had that because if you are going to go by individual kinds of buildings, then you've got to have residences, schools, and businesses, and do you need types of businesses, and churches, et cetera, et cetera, which is why we have the blanket term, "human-occupiable building." So, all three of them said, yes, change property line setback then to human-occupiable building. Each of them then had a different set, or a different distance, different perspective on the setbacks. So, there's three of them here. The first two, the first one from Lowberg, he didn't want to get rid of setbacks to property lines completely. He wanted to leave setbacks to property lines, but adjust them down to one and a quarter times the total height or the manufacturer's safety distance, which is, whichever is great. And you may recall that we came up originally with the 1,600 feet because that was a particular fire setback for one particular term. Smeby says, "Get rid of the adjacent property lines setbacks completely." And so, you can see Lowberg's change would change this. Smeby's change strikes property lines altogether. If we strike the property lines altogether, then I think we also need to change the purpose and intent because the property lines were there because of a desire for the preservation of private property rights, avoiding nuisance on adjacent landowners, et cetera. So, those would be the two different changes if they vote for this Lowberg change or if they vote for this Smeby change.
And were these their two reasons for wanting to change these? Changes to purpose and intent. What I'm asking is, okay, he said he wants to change this. Why? Give me a reason. He said he wants to change this.
Right.
Why? Give me a reason.
Right. Well, first of all, their rationale, you know, their reason is, their reason, I mean, we can't question their reason. It's good for us to understand.
If I don't understand their position, it's pretty easy to say no.
Well, but we don't get to say no.
Well, I might be able to say no.
We can recommend to the governor.
For me to understand, you know, I personally think that I need to talk to them personally about a few of these things, not publicly.
Well...
But I want to know their intent. Why do you want this?
Yeah. Enos believes that a minimum 1,600 feet on the property lines takes away too much property in the county to facilitate any wind farms.
Right.
And so, he believes that, yes, we need to provide some protection to property lines. Now, keep in mind that when they're changing the property lines, you know, these things are isolated, but at the same time, they go with the changes that they have later on in Section 4. But Enos, or Section, yeah, Section 4. Enos just, he says that he thinks that the 1,600 feet minimum is too much. It takes away too much property in the county to be available for winters. He believes that one and a quarter times the total height or the manufacturer's safety distance meets the needs for safety issues to people's property lines. Given that their human-occupiable buildings are covered in a different change, that's his rationale for this. Mark Smeby, pretty much the same thing, except he thinks that property lines should not be the subject of a setback at all, that it should be purely the buildings.
And where's Stone at?
He didn't say with regard to the property line setbacks, he simply said, well, I guess he did. He said, "Change the setbacks..."
He's talking about like a building.
Yeah. Add new setback for human-occupiable buildings to mean minimum distance. So, AJ was against the property lines as well.
So, all three supervisors, you're saying 1,600 feet's too far?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's, yeah, that's where I just, I totally disagree, but that's my opinion versus theirs.
Well, we have to come up with something that they're willing to pass. If we throw them, if we take the original document we had and say, "Hey, we're fine with it," and give it back to them, they're going to go and...
But see, this is where we gave them our opinion, based on our opinion and public input. Now, they're coming back and giving us their...
Right.
Opinion, but they're not getting much of a reason why. I don't want to just kept telling them, "No, this is what I want." I want to tell them, "This is why I want this." You've got to have open format and discussion to try to...
Yeah, we've given them, we've given them the rationale and the justification for our setbacks, the sound, and the shadow. It was, you know, that was a four or five-page document that we crafted and gave them that rationale behind all of these things. It's their ordinance, and they're saying, "We're not going to pass the ordinance as it's written. We want changes." Now, individually, the different supervisors want different changes, so they have to ultimately, starting on the 15th debate, and vote on what specific changes they're going to make. What we're supposed to do now is look at these individual changes that they've provided and then give them feedback and recommendation. We can't simply say, "We don't like your changes. We like our original text." That's not going to do us any good. That's not going to do the county.
That's not saying they want this. We said that. That's the same thing. Yeah.
Right. Right. So, what we need to do is look at the individual changes that they're proposing, and in some cases, as we see here, change A and B directly contradict each other. They're two different things. So, between those two changes, is there an alternative to those two changes and what we've already said that we want to recommend? Or do we want to say, "Well, given the two changes that you're discussing, we believe this change has more merit than this other change." That's what we have to do today. And one of the things that I am proposing is that middle ground kind of an opportunity, alternative, you know, looking at these two things in context and saying, "Well, okay, change A, the setback requirement for adjacent property lines to the greater of one and a quarter times the total height or the manufacturer's safety distance." Keeping in mind the manufacturer's safety distance, it could be 1,600 feet, it could be 1,200 feet, it could be 1,700 feet. We don't know. It's going to be based on the size of the turbine.
Have they ever tried to look any of that up or get any of that information as supervisors?
Look at what?
Manufacturer's safety distance.
No, they've taken us at our word, and what we did is say that there is such a thing. Then we have the definition.
If you had discussed any of that with anyone, I know what Enos for one was willing was talking about, safety distances and whatever, but now all of a sudden, he wants to cut these down and then use it. So, what I'm saying is, is he familiar with what this might be? Let me say this a different way. When you listen to supervisor meetings, he's been out and tried to look at different windmills and get input and gather information. Has any of them ever tried to get any of this and see what those are?
No.
They had that discussion, you know, because that's some of the...
Because it's, well, it's dependent on the specific turbine and its manufacturer's safety distance information in their manuals. We don't have those. Inverge Energy's not even selected their turbines yet.
Exactly.
So, it's, but we do know that those safety distances are dependent on the individual characteristics of the different turbines and their different sizes. So, the larger the turbine, the greater the setback.
Normally. The smart thing about this is it takes the liability off of our county if we have a manufacturer's safety distance put in this. It takes the pressure off the supervisors, and the problem is getting that information from the manufacturer versus...
It's a...
That won't be an issue once it's...
That's right.
There's a mandate. They'll have to provide it.
Once they, once they select a turbine, they have to find it.
But then that's the key thing.
Yeah, they realize that. That's part of the process that we have of their $2,000 permit is script here.
For a long time, you can't, you could call them.
Well, yeah, I know.
I don't. You can't get that. Right. And that's why we made it a part of the permitting process.
Right. And as long as that's in there, it makes it a lot easier to do soft with these other things.
Right.
You know?
Correct. And so, one of the things that, once again, we're looking at the, you know, their proposal to get rid of or dramatically change the adjacent property line setback. One of the things that I thought of as a, you know, a third path, if you will, associated with this change A is to add in a property line setback for land designated in the county as a building site. So, if, if you go into GIS today and you click on the land use filter, it shows all the land, you know, this is crop land, this is timber, this is conservation land, et cetera. These are building sites. One of the things that Enos had mentioned is a number of times that people have talked to him, in fact, he gave a couple of examples of people coming into the county, buying some of these building sites and, you know, as an acreage and putting homes on them and so on.
There's been a lot of discussion. I've had a lot of discussions.
Right. And, you know, since the county is losing population, I think if we do carve out those building sites in conjunction with that adjacent property, that would be helpful. So, one of the other examples Enos gave is there are folks that have discussed carving out an existing building site that doesn't have any buildings on it now, but is designated as a building site on tax records. They wanted to carve that out for their daughter. They haven't done so yet. This would facilitate...
And that's awesome, but to put that in, which I'm fully supportive, that also speaks directly up to some to abolishing property lines.
Well...
Versus...
So, if we go back to, right, so if we go back to A and B...
Meaning you couldn't have built your place if there, you know, some of this was changed. You know what I'm saying?
Do we have...
You know, potentially, if you went to property lines, you got rid of the property line thing.
You can always build. I can always build. I can build right next to the windmill.
You, yes, you can choose to build next to the windmill, just like you can choose to waiver some of these things. We've got to have something to waiver, right? So, changing from property lines, getting rid of property lines is almost the exact opposite of saying, "We want to preserve acreages that people don't live on because it's an abandoned acreage. We want to promote growth." Well, by abolishing property lines versus acreages, now you just...
Right. This would not, this would not abolish the property lines. It just changes the definition of this. So, for these two changes, would it be safe to say that the commission is more supportive of 3A and opposed to 3B?
Yeah, I personally am opposed of having nothing to property line. You know, you should not be able to, I'm, you know, I shouldn't be able to allow them to put a towel right on the property line of my line and my neighbors. That, there's a safety distance there, but if I'm getting paid and my neighbor's not getting paid, there, there needs to be a setback. I thought from the beginning, 1,600 is too far from a property line.
And along with what you're saying, I think 1,600 isn't enough, but it's something. It's some property line protection. And a lot of it can be waived.
Well, that's, well, the other thing is, it also forces the windmill company to negotiate of the fact of, "Okay, I am going to pay you for 500 feet into your property. I'm not going to pay you for the whole thing or whatever." Because there's some people saying, "Well, yeah, I'm okay. I'm okay with it being over there."
Right, but it takes the pressure off of us and the supervisors and all the arguments because then Inverge Energy, Enos, example, or whoever, they have to do the right work, and then they have to get the waiver signed and get it on file, then...
Right.
But they have to have something to waiver. They have to have something to protect.
And you can only...
Non-agricultural use from invading over a fence line, a property line.
Which, if you go back to our zoning, throw all the building right out because we're zoned for agriculture, and agriculture is what we're there for, not, not somebody to live there. I mean, that's kind of the intent, so, you know...
Right. You're talking about an acre zone versus an agricultural...
Well, the object, the object of the whole zoning is to keep it for agriculture. I mean, almost everything that you can do in the zoning ordinance is making a waiver to take it away from agriculture. And it's been, you know, and that's part of our document that we're working on.
What we're doing is not blocking agriculture. We're blocking non-agricultural. Wind energy is not agriculture.
Correct. But keeping it, keeping it open for an acreage, is that something that we should be concerned about?
To me, the property lines are a bigger deal than an acreage because they're already somebody's property. They already have a border.
Right.
I'm not saying that it shouldn't be in there. I really like the idea, especially for promoting personal growth, population, like you come to the county with yours. That's a big deal. It's a good thing. We need kids in this county. We need people in this county. We don't have people in this county, it doesn't matter. We'll win another county.
If those acreages that currently are not in use, they, you know, we're talking about building sites that, I don't know how many there are in the county, but there's got to be at least dozens of building sites in the county that the buildings are not occupiable. If there are buildings there, they may already be carved out as an acreage, but in many other instances, they're part of a larger parcel that the parcel at large just has this building site in it. Tax records show you, here's the boundary of the building site as opposed to the crop land. If the county does not do something to add protections to that, and a windmill goes up in accordance with the ordinance with all the rest of the setbacks and happens to be 30 feet off of that building site acreage, the odds of anybody deciding to buy that or occupy it are nil. And I think it, I think it would be good that those things would be protected as part of the property line setbacks in the ordinance, protected in the same fashion that the human-occupiable buildings are protected because that's what will go into those acreages.
I could be wrong, but I think the 2006 Worth County Comprehensive Development Plan gives language to that, promoting personal growth or families onto places like that. I couldn't wrong. I think it has...
Yeah. And if... Yeah, and if, if we, if we look at, we know that the total population in the county is going down. NICO, the guy that's, um, working on the, the data for us, has said that Worth County is one of the few counties in Iowa that have more people that live in the county and work outside the county. So what people we are getting in the county and we're keeping in the county, more and more of them are working outside the county. But those two things together, they're not farms.
Right.
Now, we're not losing a lot of farmland. So what we are doing is gaining acreages. And so I think protecting those acreages that are not yet used would be good, so.
And I hate to tie them together, but there again, what I'm saying is, as we're trying to save that and protect that, if you take away a property line setback.
But that's why.
That's contradicting the whole train of thought.
It, it is and it isn't, so look at what, um.
And I understand it about an abandoned or existing acreage. Half the people that want to come in and build a new house don't want to build on an existing acreage, they want to start a Queensland paper, okay? I'm not talking against, but tell me, what I'm saying is if you take away the property line setbacks, you're, you're.
We're not suggesting them to do that.
Well, in, in some of these other circumstances, that's a lot of the talk, that's why I'm sensitive to that.
Yeah, but so, specific to, to the changes in three, this is the text that I'm proposing as our response to the supervisors regarding the changes in 3A and 3B. And we can say. Yeah, that just says, we, we were intentional in what we said in the original draft, that we're supportive of the change 3A and not 3B. And that if they're adopted, uh, then we're suggesting that we add that.
I don't necessarily.
What you guys made.
This made this meet.
But. We need to provide, we are required to provide our feedback to the supervisors so that the supervisors can vote on what they intend to change.
What I'm saying is, we're, we gotta, we didn't build this in one day, we didn't build this in one meeting.
I think we're getting hung up on the adjacent property line. We need to move on to building site as well as the human.
They're all relative to each other.
But we're not even to the human occupiable setbacks, that has its own connotations here. So I think I'm okay with going with A on here from the property line, that way we maintain it. I have a question about the building site table coming up here, but. Then when we can, we can talk about the further setbacks from the human occupiable building or whatever that is.
I, I, I agree with what you're saying, I understand that. My concern is, as we go through that, all of these are so relative to each other. I mean, if we're adding stuff, that's fine. Changing some things, that's fine, but what I'm afraid of is making a decision here and then all of a sudden, now we lost our setbacks from the property line. If we lose that, if we kept our property line setbacks.
Which is what we're all saying.
Then I will, then it changes the occupo, you know.
That, that's what we're saying here, Todd, is we stand by our original property line setbacks in the draft based on our rationale. Given what, given what the supervisors have said they want to do and what they've said they're not going to do, they're not going to accept those setbacks.
Correct.
So that should have saved. So our alternatives are in front of us here. This is what they've said that they want to do. Which one are we more supportive?
One of them said they would like this, one of them said they'd like this, the other one hasn't said.
The other one says that property line setbacks are too far, uh, too far, meaning we change the residence.
So basically you've got two of them saying.
Actually, he's, actually one of them.
That's what two of them are saying.
One of them's saying throw it out, one of them's saying to change it. And then the other one here says.
Change it.
Changes it to different, different numbers.
Change it to rest, to the human occupiable building.
Now property instead of property. So you got, you got, you got two things. You talked about property. Originally we said X. That includes houses, birth tests, everything, 1,600 feet. Supervisors say no. Okay, so now we gotta separate, okay, you got a house, you got a property line, and you got an eagles mask.
Yeah.
Those are now going to have different setbacks to make. So something that the, those, all three supervisors can say, yep, we'll take it. But even if we give them whatever, they're still going to do that.
I got, yeah, that's.
Well, I'm like, that's what I'm afraid of, that's, I, I don't know.
Like you were talking about, you know, zoning is agricultural. And Jeff said, well, you're not taking that much out of production. But every one of them turns, these are, if it's farther away from the property, it's far more ground out.
Things that even.
Yeah, so.
And there's two supervisors about.
I'm not, I mean, the property lines aren't still waiver, I always have been, I don't know what to think.
Does this have to be.
But the building, occupied buildings or the future occupied buildings, I, yeah, there needs to be.
So in other words, the public hasn't seen all this either, they have no idea what the supervisors are suggesting.
This is.
Is this on board?
Yes, yep, but so people can see now what it is that the supervisors individually have said. Right, the supervisors don't even know what each other have said. So what AJ has said is, we will each give the zoning commission our individual recommendations so that the zoning commission can look at our individual recommendations and then give us feedback on them. So that the supervisors can then say, okay, well, I want to change this and you want to change this and you want to change this. You've got your opinion on a different, and I, my opinion on a different. The zoning commission weighs in on this so that they can consider it and ultimately they have to vote and decide which of these changes that the individuals want are going to pass.
And to me, these, this is a lot less bigger deal if I knew the safety distance.
But we, but we don't. All we know is that they, we know that those safety distances exist. We won't know what the distance is until the turbine has been selected and the manuals are provided.
Right, that, but originally when we built the ordinance, that's why we tried to build a minimum buffer. Because we didn't know if we could get any of that information, it's unlikely to get that information. That's why we tried to have a buffer in it, similar to what the Comprehensive Development Plan said and a lot of it on public input was, I don't want that right on my fence line. It's not an agricultural product, I don't want it right on my fence line, even though it's on your side of the fence line, I want a buffer. And now our choices are.
The choices are no property line setbacks or the setbacks that Enos is recommending and our addition to his on the building sites.
And it's still the greater of too, Todd, it's not.
The greater of what they can get, yes, but if they can't get the safety manufacturer's data, now you're down to 1.25.
They have to provide.
They have to provide that.
They don't get the permit if they don't provide it.
Yep. Okay.
Here's the manual with the permit.
If they're gonna not give the permit, the supervisors, yeah.
That, the.
That's hard. Okay, so that makes that a lot easier for me.
Okay.
I know I'm being, you know, but. You know, because, because I'm the person that, remember we sat in this room and, and your neighbor said, you know, 1.25 minimum setbacks? That's my claim, okay? But, you know, I realized we're trying to move this forward, now we're down to 500 feet here or whatever. Well, if we can't get the manufacturer's distance.
But the manufacturer's safety distance invariably is going to be larger.
But then that means the supervisors have to stick to getting this to keep them.
The ordinance requires it as a part of the permit.
Right, okay, that, that helps.
Okay, so that said, is everybody okay with the highlighted language there being our feedback to the supervisors on this changes in item number three?
Well, that's a nice addition.
And I, I guess I'm saying, if it's not currently a building site, I, I don't really offer protection for it, but.
Well.
That's me.
What's your, what are you calling?
What can abandon.
Would you say if it's not a building site? Because they're designated as a building site in GIS to that.
But are.
Yes. What I'm saying is, if for tax purposes, this piece of ground, and it may be, I'll just, I'll make up numbers. It may be a 10-acre parcel that's designated as a building site that has no buildings on it or no habitable buildings on it. It may be a 10-acre building site that is part of a 40-acre parcel.
Correct.
Where 30 acres are crop land and 10 acres are designated on tax rules as a building site. That's the building sites that this is referring to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm right there.
Okay.
Uh, you, you're not losing me on the definition, you're not losing me. My point is, if it's not currently a building site, I'm not really concerned about.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just, the Fenni Farm, you want to give protection to the Fenni Farm.
Cross one.
If, if, it would be.
And this, you're giving that protection and I'm saying, it's abandoned, it's out. That one has natural protection of the fact that it's part of a larger parcel. So it, it, you know, how many of them are already part of a larger parcel?
That, that's what I was saying there, I, I don't know how many there are in the, in the county, um.
But once, according to our definition, in reality, it doesn't take much to become your human occup.
Human occupiable building?
Correct.
Or it has to be a structurey sound building that can be occupied.
Correct, but it doesn't take much to do that.
True.
I mean, I could tell you today that the Fenni Farm, there's a building out there that could become a workshop fairly easy.
I don't think so. I'm confident.
And maybe it's deteriorated more than.
I've got hunting permission in there, there's, there's nothing.
Even if there's not a structure left on it, it's still listed under acres as a building site.
Yeah.
Which, I, I, and I'm going, I'm going to say this again, if you have a property line, it's a row, because every acreage, every farm.
But that's, that's not true though. And, yeah, I'll, I'll give you another example. Um, Glenn Butler, uh, passed away last year, but he's got land in, um, I don't remember if it's in Brookfield or if it's still in Kinsit, I think it's on the Kinsit side, maybe it's, anyway. Um, he's got a, a chunk of land that is part of a larger parcel. And he wanted to improve that, um, that building site, um, for his daughter. Well, right now, it's just on tax rules as a building site, there's no building on it. It meets the definition of building site, it's listed that way on tax rules. But if we don't protect those kinds of building sites, then it could be, like I said, it could be part of another, you know, a, a 40-acre parcel. Forty, you know, 35 acres are co-armed and five acres are a building site if no building on it yet.
And I understand that's a separate item than what I'm imparting out, so I get it, I agree with this, I like this. I'm going to get to the next thing.
And if you're in the zoned area of the county, you can't build there anyway. If it's a five acre chunk.
You can, that's not completely true either.
Without exception.
You, it would have to be, it would have to be a rural residential zone, that building site.
Right.
Well, actually it could anyway, in that example in the 40. If it's.
In the 40, it's fine.
Right, right, yeah.
But you also.
It's got to be 15 or more.
You're also.
Yeah, let's, let's move on, is there?
It happens all the time.
Do we need to change anything here? Do we need to take anything out?
We're leaving the, sorry, we're leaving the building site in there as a definition and adding that table one.
Well, this is, this would be the, this would be the commission comments that if you're going to chop down the property line.
Yeah.
Here, then we're suggesting you add that.
Is there a reason the building site is getting more than?
Building site is, is the same as the, um, uh, human occupiable building or consistent with human occupiable building stuff in two of the changes. So if we look at the change four, the setbacks for human occupiable buildings, you've got three of the supervisors wanting to make changes, each of them want to make a different change. The original, if you just change property lines to human occupable building, it gets what our original was. And so that's what I did with the building site. Given, building sites are typically small and a couple hundred feet one way or the other inside that five acre chunk, you don't know where that building might be.
Right.
I don't know, I'm, I'm with Dave though. Is that right?
I thought it was sort of like.
Um, um, you know, some of these, they're just trees, I mean, why, I don't know, protecting those, I don't, you know, that's the way to go here. I, those don't concern me, I guess, personally.
Now I'm great.
Yep, darn it too. Now they can decide.
Yep, it puts it in their law.
Yep.
Because that's something they, they can easily make that decision out of building site issues. And I could, you know, and here's the thing, I can easily see both sides of the argument. Um, I just think about that I know that there's a fair amount of abandoned building sites that the farmer just hasn't taken down. And, you know, is that, you know. One of the guys I've worked with out in Nebraska, everything's pissed, right? So the corner, people are putting houses on the corner.
Sure.
Because they can buy it and they're getting too many rural population. So they change it, you got to have 40 acres to build out. So you got to buy part of the Fenni. Pick it up and prop it. But, you know, I just.
Yeah, and that comes down to, we're actually enforcing the rules or not because I was talking to the zoning, all by me. It used to be, they sometimes did it like, if you lived within the first mile of your state, you were zoned, you couldn't have anything with less than 10 acres. Without an exception. You can have an exception. Then anybody.
Say that again.
I've got six acres, my neighbor's got one.
Say, say again.
You couldn't have, couldn't have an acre. On less than 10 acres in the zone. That's the way it used to be understood, now I don't know that that was completely correct.
There is. There is nothing in the zoning ordinance since 2009 that says that.
That was the way the public knowledge used to be. I think you're probably right, because we had this discussion.
I researched that.
Because Myers.
I, I, no.
I'm thinking.
I researched that very thoroughly when somebody presented that to me when I was at, admitted, I was the zoning admin, interim zoning admin. And I said, I've read through the zoning ordinance, I have not seen that. I passed around, I looked, nobody could cite a source of where that came from. That was a quote, "understanding" in the county, but that wasn't.
Believe that, because I'm going, wait, I've got six acres.
Yeah.
I'm just shy of 10. It's basically 10.
All right, let's move on, so I.
5 inches is seven.
I noted that we were split. All right, setback for human-occupiable buildings. So, Smeby, his comment was very short. We need to change property lines to human-occupiable buildings. So he gave no change other than change this. Lowberg said he wants to manage setbacks to buildings for people that host a wind turbine differently from people that don't host a wind turbine. So, he essentially just took out the minimum specific feet. So his minimum is 3.75 times. And if you recall, I added a table on the front side of the document, so if we. Look at that real quick, we got a quick, top of Iowa turbines, 3.75 is 1,200. Barton, top of Iowa, 2 and 3 are, for all intents and purposes, 1,500 feet. Deer Creek, Freeborn Project would be 1,700 feet, et cetera. Worthwhile Wind, they've not selected their turbines. I've heard them talk about 590-feet-tall turbines. The 3.75-inch plier would be 2,200 feet. So if we.
Yeah, our ordinance specifically had a 500-foot cap. In our.
Yeah, they're, that's not an issue. It's not, out of their changes. So, that's Lowberg's, Smeby's, and then Stone. He had turbines up to 616 feet, should be 2,000 feet setback. So his has got a minimum of 2,000. And then if it's over 616 feet, he's got half a mile.
And nothing about manufacturer's safety distance.
Nothing about manufacturer's safety distance.
So my question to the rest of you, we kind of settled on the 1,600 to 3.75 in the total height. We got Smeby saying that's fine, we have, in essence, Lowberg saying 3.75 is fine for manufacturer. The only thing he doesn't do is the 1,600 minimum. Do we want to change it, or are we happy, happy just leaving it, all on Smeby? We're kind of the middle ground in giving protection to everybody.
Yeah.
On our original ordinance.
Yeah.
Because our original ordinance has manufacturer's safety in it already too.
Yeah.
I mean, we started going, we want to take our buildings, not property lines.
That's correct.
Perhaps a huge change. Correct, huge change. And that's, this is where I keep keeping the drum, like, this is my property, that's your property. You gave me no buffer from your non-agricultural entity around my property. Whether it's where I live, or where I garden, or ride horse, or might want to build a house someday, even though it's not recognized on the GIS right now as a building site. I've always wondered right there, it's just not surveyed off separately, it's still farmland or woods or. Um, that's, we understand, I understand exactly where you're, but supervisors aren't going to take 1,600 for the property line. They're forgetting property line, right, start at property line. Because they're looking.
Yeah, property lines are a separate thing altogether.
This is human.
Right, human-occupiable buildings.
Non-coal.
So, it's a new concept, if you will, for us from the ordinance perspective, because we didn't talk about buildings, because we relied on our property lines. So, we, again, reading ahead, when they said, change everything from property line to the buildings, that was setbacks, sound, shadow. So, sound limits are still there, they just apply to the human-occupiable buildings as opposed to the property lines.
Personally, that's, that's a huge.
So, we, we, we said, we believed that property line protections were important for private property rights. And we gave our rationale for that. We said that the setbacks, the geographic setbacks, were predominantly for safety purposes, because shadow is separately addressed, sound is separately addressed. So the question then is, from a safety perspective, when it comes to the human-occupiable buildings, is, are we more supportive of one of these or the other?
I'd say B is where I'm at.
That's where I want it.
That's why I already said, I mean, it's, it's right where we recommended. But when we recommended it to property lines, not buildings. Correct, but at my house. So if this is an addition line to the property lines, that's a total different outlook than replacing the property lines. Total different, total different book. But you got three choices of three supervisors, what are they going to pass? What are they willing to put into place? Or do they throw it all out, and they make an agreement with Inverd Energy? Can they throw this all by the wayside?
Yeah, if you.
Maybe they need to be reminded that, because your property rights start at your property line, and that's what the people in the county have spoken, that's what we felt was correct and put in there. And I still firmly believe in that. I don't want to be just safe in my house, I want to be safe on my side of my property that I own. I don't live in my house, I might have a garden or whatever. But go back to the first thing we talked about. Property line is manufacturer's safety distance. It is given to the safety that the turbine recommends. So that is still in there, they're not changing that, they're not passing it.
No, that's why. Not asking to change what, it's what I was reading.
Property line setbacks. The property line setback is still manufacturer's safety distance.
Well, that's what we're recommending.
That's our recommendation. So if you're going to safety, it doesn't matter where you're at on your property, you should be. So you're trying to tell me, so this is an addition to the property line setback? Yeah, so, this is two different things. Totally. I'm just trying to make sure there's nothing infringes on the property line. Right, we already, we did the property line, now we're saying. If you set a house 5 foot in, now where's it got to go? And to me, we already did the 1,600 feet, whether, the only difference it really makes to my place, and I'm just using my place, is 50 foot. It's 50 foot from the property line to the house. So, 1,600 feet to the property line moves that thing 1,650 away from my house versus 1,600, right?
Do we want to say anything more than this? This is what I heard.
I'm good.
Tom?
Go ahead, I'm not sure what to say. I'm going to crawl on that. I guess I'm not trusting some of this even.
Well, all we can do is provide comment and recommendation. They're the ones that are going to vote and decide.
Yep, right, I understand that, it's, in the end, it's theirs.
Yep.
They're responsible for it. Yep.
Okay, five, add a new setback for confinement buildings. This one was from Lowberg, it's essentially the same thing as what he is recommending for property lines.
So you can put that, you can put a COFO closer than you can human occupancy.
That's right.
Is what he's saying. And if, if you drive out to Myers, they put that COFO pretty close to a windmill. I mean, because the setbacks for COFO are worse than setbacks for windmills today because of the way they are regulated. There are not enough places to put them. And I'm sure that's why he came up with that of. So I, I don't support that. Because a COFO is different than. It's different if it's your confinement and your windmill, or if it's somebody else's. Well, if I want to put my hog house next to your windmill, if I go by human occupancy, I got to be further away. And then I may not be able to put my hog house next to your windmill. I mean, you're talking about two different entities, right? And D and R is, so.
Okay, so, we're okay with this commission comment?
Yes.
Okay. Lowberg wants to change the eagles nest setback to a mile.
There are birds get more room than I do, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I'm being a midline disagree.
Yep.
I agree. I disagree with that.
Yep.
We, we discussed, to me, if it's 1,600 feet to my house, it can be 1,600 foot to that eagle house. I understand that, I know there's a lot of people concerned about that, and everyone just said the same thing we did. How can a bird get this and I can't?
Exactly.
And I'm not trying to take away from the birds, I'm trying to say you're taking it away from me. And that's, I've, and. It's good because it's good for the business. Well, and, and that's one of the things is that if you look at, you know, and I'm trying to remember from six months ago, but I went in and the number of eagles per population getting killed by windmills is lesser than the average stupid swallow, you know? You know, they're, they're, they're pretty smart bird. Evidently, they see them.
I was going to say, we had one in one of our fields where I couldn't snipe him, no, it didn't hit the turban, I mean, it didn't hit the turban, I'm saying, it was in the middle of them. There was one on all sides of them, and it didn't care.
No, I, I, and I get it, I, I understand that there's some people that want, but I'm, I'm sorry. The eagle shouldn't get more than I get.
Yep.
And what are you going to do? I could carry it away, I'm not a. So an eagle goes in the nest, right in the middle of the bird, or on top of the wind turbine, they got burnt up and they didn't get out there to fix it, and then they built it. Now what happens? Yep. I never thought of that. Perfect place for one.
Yep.
I mean.
Oh, no.
I, I just, you know, it is, that's, that's where I go. So we all, okay.
We can move on then.
Here's, here's what I wrote. Somebody want to make changes to that?
No, you just changed it to what you wanted to do. Oh, your fault, I'm sorry.
Uh, Lowberg, we had the district, zoning district boundaries. We had those set at the same thing as what we have for property lines. Enos is suggesting that they should be the same as what he thinks property lines should be.
I don't know why it wouldn't.
I, I think it would be, should be consistent.
All right. Yeah, I agree.
I've just seen people love their buildings, and that's all they really know.
Yeah.
How can I get an eagle on my property?
Yeah, can I be lost?
You can catch it, go ahead.
So, this first one is just during the design. The draft originally said that they had to do their design impact analysis, looking at their property boundaries and extending out two and a half miles. Lowberg was saying, cut that back to within a mile and a half of the project map. I think a mile and a half is plenty far.
Yeah, I, that sounds fine. I, we threw two because it was easy.
Yep. And then Lowberg and Smeby both said, change that sound analysis to apply to human-occupiable building locations as opposed to property lines, consistently for a change off of property lines.
That's still during the design?
Yes.
Yep.
One of the concerns I've had is sound measuring. We keep talking about the empty property. One of my concerns is, the bigger the tower is, the farther away the sound repercussions come. It's not always the closest tower, it's not always the right end of your property line. If it were on your property, not just from the closest tower, but any of them. I thought we had something in there to protect against groupings, and, but I don't remember if this changes any of that.
No.
You're still measuring the sound on your property. Because if you're too close to the tower, you're not going to get a good curve. There's some sound that might be in the way. I think there's exactly the same if you're standing under a tower, it's not the same thing as downwind. The bigger the tower, the bigger the difference that is.
They whistle blind, I mean, come on that.
Yeah, when you're underneath, you definitely get a whistle. A lot of talk is the sound and the repercussions.
Okay, so, up on three, we talked about the commission being split on. Okay, so up on three, we talked about the commission being split on if you're gonna take away the property line protections that we'd originally had, change those to human occupiable buildings, that some of us believe that, well, you should add in some protections for those building sites. And not everybody was in agreement with that or split on that. That has an impact on the, 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 the sound and flicker and such. So it's the same consideration with regard to building sites. So what I've said is, just like our comments in section three, the commission is split with regard to protections for building sites being added as a result of changes away from the original property line protections. Okay? Change to sound emission targets for data to adjacent property owners. Again, this is moving from property lines to human occupiable buildings. That was from Lowberg and Smeddie.
And the values did not change, correct?
The values did not change. The, the only things that changed are what you see in the red line.
Yep, property line to neutral.
Right.
Because that's, when I read through it, that's, that was my assumption and I'm like, okay.
So, but if they're giving occupable buildings, it would be your complete acreage.
Right.
So if you're, if you're listed as a six acre thing, that's six acres, not just a new building.
No, this, you change it to just buildings on that property, not the property at large. It's just the buildings on the property.
To me, and all of this feels like it's really infringing on everybody's personal privacy.
Well, and that's why I, that's why I had said upfront here that if you're gonna, if you're gonna take away those property line rights, then we need to remove this language out of our purpose and intent. Because it's...
To me, it's really taken a lot of...
We're not building this anymore.
It's taken on hell of a lot of the good and work out of the organs that we built.
I don't disagree with you.
And there's a lot of people in Worth County that really felt that was a little bit soft for the non-participating owners already and now it's...
I can give them the contact information of the three people they need to talk to.
Right, well, it sounds like the three people are kind of forgetting the rest of the people in the county, hoping we'll change it for them here.
Still, they're the ones that are voting and it's on them, whether you like it or not. Because the way it was, the vote was no. And then they were gonna make their own agreement. Like has been done in the past.
Which?
Okay. So one of the things I noted is they would also need to change this section in noise complaint testing. So any specific comments with regard to the changing news?
Yes. Can bring that in there, get you on my side of the party list.
Well, I can say that the...
Strongly disagree with changes to the sound at property lines. Because it's like the same law. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a concert every Saturday night. Well, I'm just gonna be a mile and a half away from your house. I'm gonna be... But I'll be within these parameters. I'm, I'm a little bit, I just have to say this and maybe I'm getting this wrong, but I'm a little bit surprised by today's technology and all concerns and the lack of knowledge of infrasound that our supervisors are looking at, narrowing our ordinance. Science is always changing. Technology's always changing.
Do we wanna say this? Do we wanna say something different?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the draft has land hosting and non-land hosting separation still, correct?
That's correct.
So these numbers apply to what? Which section or is it all?
This is an adjacent, from adjacent landowner.
So a non-participating?
Non-participating.
It really feels like we're just giving away everything that you could have waived in any way. Most of this could have been waived and I'm not waived.
Well, I, I do actually still agree with the fact that the sound needs to be at the property line. The, the height thing, you know, it's just, it's like we're talking about flicker. You can make flicker disappear on my property as a non-distant. Okay, that's something you choose to do turned off when the sun's at that angle. When the wind is out of the, you can choose how noisy it is at my house. So I still, I, it's like you say, I, I, I agree with the original, the property lines on sound.
The sound protection from the health standpoint.
You know, the height, the height and distance, I, I really don't care that much about it. As long as it's, as long as it's the, whatever the manufacturer's safety distance is, keep it that far away from my house, from my land, I'm fine with that.
The flicker and the sound, you're right.
It's, to me, it's, it's always been, it, when, when you talk to the people in Deer Creek, it's the sound that, that they're, that, that everybody's complaining about. Nobody really cares how close they are. It's how loud they are. And we all know the further you get away from a starter tractor, the quieter they are. So if you wanna say that, best one shut off. I, I, I agree with that.
That's great.
Okay? If you're not participating.
Because it goes back to if these things are silent, nobody cares.
Nobody cares.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a big deal. The infrasound and audible sound, then all you really have left is flicker, otherwise it's everywhere. I mean, there is, there is location, location, location. There is for some people the height and site thing, but we're talking about the most important aspects of right here.
Right.
Number 10 is shadow flicker on the turbine hosting landowners.
You've said in the meetings a hundred times, you just said, non-participating should experience zero flicker.
This is, this is participating. This is people that are hosting a turbine on their land. Lowberg is saying, remove the not more than 50 days per year restriction. So if they get 30 hours per year, it doesn't matter if it's, occurs 30 hours over 20 days or 200 days.
Okay, just, just a comment on that was one of that is some of the public had mentioned that the leader of the household who's been signing off on that, probably people in the household. I'm, I'm not, I'm not against, I'm not against, if, if, if you're gonna make your kids put up with that and you're gonna let you get it, it's just if the general public had mentioned that sometimes we need to help those that can't help themselves within participating homes.
Right, so this still says not more than 30 minutes per day or more than 30 hours per year. The only thing that you're moving is over the 50 days per year. That language came explicitly because it was in some other ordinances in other counties that had that 50 days per year limit. I don't really think it makes a difference as long as these other limits are there.
Well, that's, it's 30 hours a year.
As long as non-participating, I think the majority is still...
Yeah, I mean...
So this is, so now we go for the adjacent landowners, the non-participating folks.
And that's where you're...
This is what we just talked about earlier, no?
Well, it, yeah, is it property line? Uh, so all three of you support just going to the thing, right? So...
Okay, so just to brainstorm on the side, this, this doesn't seem like that big a deal to me, right? But what about, should there be something added in there? We already got his human occupable buildings that are already set up even if there's a home there. So they're covered. What I'm saying is, do we need to add something in there to at least get to the 50, um, half hour thing? If I build, open up my field, a new house, that isn't currently on the GIS of an occupable building? Because a lot of people that own ground, Bernie, decided to build a new house.
Exactly, I mean, you still can't.
Right, but what I'm saying is if you build a new house, gee, you just limited where I can build because now the rest of my lands got shadow flicker on it because it wasn't already an existing occupable by definition building property.
Right. No, I'm, I'm...
You know what I'm saying? So what I'm saying is, this is fine, but do we have to add in there some sort of a protection where somebody does build something? I mean, I, I don't know the balance in there, you know, who's there first? Well, my land was here before the windmill. Are you telling me I can't build here because I'm gonna have to suffer from flicker unless? Is there some way to put something in here that says, hey, if I regret my land and I decide to build a new house out here in middle of nowhere, shouldn't I still get some kind of protection from flicker even though I didn't already have it on the GIS as an occupable building? You, you understand my train of thought there? I'm not gonna be saying it the right way.
Well, so I, I think I, I typed what you were saying differently. So first of all, what I heard from everybody that spoke was that we liked the original guidance as it pertains to protection of property rights as opposed to moving the protections to apply specifically to buildings with regard to the shadow flicker. If the building site protections that we talked about in the other changes, if they adopted those and they decide to only apply it to the buildings, then we think that they should carve out an exception for the building sites. And I said we were split.
But of, of what I'm getting at is there might not already be a building site. You know what I'm saying? Bernie decided all of a sudden, I'm using Bernie as an example to go across from you. All of a sudden Bernie decided to build a house in the middle of the field. It wasn't an existing building site.
Right.
The, the problem...
This wouldn't help that.
Right, so should we have something in there that, hey, if you owned this property before the windmill? It might be full shadow flicker on it right now, but if I decide to build a house on my property that I own before the windmill is there, shouldn't I be able to have some leverage to limiting the flicker or...
I don't know how we could write...
Well, you are in the fact of if you are participating, you're 30 hours, right?
Right, but if you're non-participating and you go to build a new house on your property, it's, yeah. Now you've got more protection. So by moving this from the property line to the building site...
And let's go back to Bernie. That was a beautiful field when I built my house. And he wrecked my point of view.
Just thinking it was an eight hundred foot windmill.
Well, I'm just saying, you have no protection against future endeavors.
Right, but did that change your view?
Yes.
But not nearly as bad as shadow flicker would, not nearly as bad as infrasound would, not nearly as bad as addressable sound. You just gave away your property, you just gave away all of your property rights again for somebody else's non-agricultural venture.
Yep.
For a few bucks, because that's all about money. If you're looking for money, they wouldn't know.
Correct, and that's, but we're, we're operating within what the supervisor wants us to do.
But they could, they could add something like that.
So like in this...
Do you think that if so and so wants to put a new house up on his property and it's not already on the GIS as an occupable building site but will be, then the windmill has to work with them to limit it?
Yeah, they agree. What you're asking for, Todd, would be a blanket authority in the ordinance for anybody to wake up one day and tell the windturb, tell the, the energy company, you can't have any shadow flicker on this chunk of land that you've had shadow flicker on for the last 10 years.
No, it's my land. That's, that's my land on the side of the fence.
Yep, but the, the first rule that was, that's in here, you know, if they...
This is exactly why so many people say there should not be windmills anywhere anybody lives. We had that, we had that discussion right there.
I just, I, I don't, I don't think that it would be a viable option for us to put that kind of a blanket.
Maybe, maybe not with this kind of pressure?
It's got nothing to do with it.
It's just pressure, I don't think it's...
It is what it is. I mean, and, and...
But you, if you go, yes, but if you go back, the old plan, you go back to the 2006 Worth County Comprehensive Development Plan, it specifically says these things, not specifically about windmills but about any other entity, including agriculture, but especially not agriculture, that it's not gonna infringe on your neighbor's rights or quality of life. It says it right in there from 2006. And now we're saying, eh, we don't know if we can give these guys permission because a couple of the recent supervisors want to go from property line to building site.
Well, they want to go from property line to building.
Yeah, building, not building site. That's even worse.
Well, and that's why I, I, I'm saying here that if the building site protections that we were split on in the earlier changes, if those are added and they change the flicker to apply to buildings, then we think you ought to add protection for building sites in addition to the buildings. What say you? Because you were split on the building site on the other. What is your opinion on building sites?
I'm saying, the building site has nothing, if there's not a current building.
Okay, so...
And I understand that complete rationale.
Right.
But if you already own the land, then now it's like, well, geez, you know? Took me four, took me four years to pay for this 60 acres and now I can't build my new house because now I gotta...
Flip the coin?
You know what I mean? And I understand your scenario. You have a very good example of how Bernie built a house across from you. I get it, but that's...
I couldn't stop him.
Right, but he, he's not...
I just, I think that the building sites...
To look at me.
Yeah, because of, we want people to move into town.
What was he thinking?
There's so many places...
But no, but it's, it's still not, because it's, yes, but it's still not an industrial energy plant out your front door. It's another nice home.
I don't think it takes away that much.
You know, um, options. And I, I know I'm stretching there. I was just still trying to give the current property owners of this county their legal rights over a possible entity coming in from somewhere else and ruining their... their legal rights over a possible entity coming in from somewhere else and ruining their, or worse, their home. But it's the same point.
That's what we're saying, that's what we're saying in your first statement, is we stand by our original guidance.
Yep, and I, I have no problem with, if you're not getting paid, well, you shouldn't have to deal with shadow.
I'm one of many in this county, the rest of the county doesn't get to sit here and shut the damn thing off. I, you understand, I'm not trying to be obtuse to everybody, I'm not against windmills, I'm going, what about me and my rights? I've been here for years and now you wanna...
Number twelve, permit fee for each turbine, Lowberg wants to bump that up to two thousand dollars per turbine instead of one thousand dollars.
And no comment by the others?
Nothing.
There goes, oh, it's two thousand from a thousand?
Yeah.
Charge. I, I don't know anything about it, so...
Well, it just...
Is two thousand enough, is one thousand enough, is five bucks enough?
I don't, I don't know what does it cost, does it cost?
They can argue that as far as...
Well, it's a matter of what, what, how much time does the county spend on wind turbine issues?
That's right, that could be just put in there as, it's subject to what the cost is, is what you guys want to charge. You know?
I, I'm not gonna get into it.
Yeah, sounds good, yep.
Okay, upgrades to existing turbines. So we have three different ones, so first of all, all three, all three supervisors said the current language that says that the turbines out there in the top of Iowa, one and two and three in Barton, they may want to upgrade them someday. The existing language that says that they have to be permitted if they're gonna change size, all three of them said, eh, not necessary. Smeby says, if they're there, the energy company should be able to do whatever they want with them in the future. If they want to double them in size in the same spot, well. Lowberg says, if they want to replace that turbine with something bigger and it's only ten percent bigger, that's fine. If it's more than ten percent bigger, it needs to go through permitting. Stone says fifteen percent with an engineering study.
Okay, instead of just giving an opinion, I'm gonna give you a reason again, okay? They've already got windmills there, they should be able to upgrade them as needed for what's there, just like our ordinance said. Which they shouldn't, it's, it's already there, we shouldn't have to, I get it, meaning they can fix them, they can't make them any bigger. When you first read this, ten percent doesn't sound like that much, fifteen percent doesn't sound like that much. Okay, well, so they do them three times, doing fifteen percent every time, woo, that's a lot. Okay, where I'm going with this is, times are changing, technology is changing, people are discovering nuisance and health problems that we didn't know about when these were built, okay? Now, there was a couple of people at a supervisor's meeting saying, we love them down there, we just love them, this was great. AJ made a comment, yeah, that went really good. Okay, if it went that good and everybody's still that in favor, then anything but replacing them as is, meaning any bigger, shouldn't be any problem if they want them bigger, to have everybody sign off on them. That way the county doesn't have to worry about it, the zoning board doesn't have to worry about it, supervisors don't have to worry about it. The developer or the owners want it bigger, they can talk to the neighbors, they can get the waivering process with a new permit to change them to whatever the hell they want. Because then we don't care, if all the neighbors don't care, we don't care either. The neighbors can sign off on it, none of us have to worry about it. But it needs to stay the way our ordinance said, because now, well, my dad signed that and he's gone now, I'm living here and I don't like the windmills. Now, so, gee, my kid can't sleep because they have sleep apnea from the infrasound or whatever. What I'm saying is, this original agreement thirty years ago is from thirty years ago, okay? Upgrade them, fix them as needed, just like our original, we all agreed our original ordinance said. If they want to change them, then they gotta go through the same process as everybody else in the county to keep it fair, especially to their neighbors where there might be a change in opinion. That way we're not taking anything away from them, but they still have to prove that all of their neighbors are on the same page if they want to make them bigger, just like the rest of the county. That's just common sense. I know ten percent doesn't sound like much, but what if they upgraded it three times in the next ten years, now that was thirty percent? Believe it or not, is, we have a waivering process, we have a permitting process, and we're not taking anything away from them, keeping their operation going. Because my problem is, you know, first when I read this, yeah, ten percent, big deal, well, ten percent, fifteen percent, where do we start and stop? Okay, you can fix what you already have, as we said, and you want to make it bigger, start out with a permitting process. And if everybody is in favor down there like they were, you're not gonna have any problem getting the waiver signed and a new permit to build to our new standards. That's common sense to me. Basically, it's forcing them to make sure the neighbors are on the same page and all getting along so it can be the same hunky-dork situation it always was, so we don't run into the same things we're getting into everywhere else.
Okay, as devil advocates, if I can put a power plant on top that's five percent bigger and twenty percent quieter, is that not a good thing?
Sure, and you should be able to, and if that's the case, you shouldn't have any problem getting a new permit for it because your neighbors will agree, hell yeah, that's a good deal. It's quieter than the last one? Yeah, I'll sign that paper, comes down to waivering process, there's a lot of variables.
You know, my question is, yeah, what percent do you say, you know, obviously supervisors are saying, one's saying ten, one's saying fifteen, the other ones...
This is ten percent once?
So, I just, I just did some quick math, the top of Iowa, two and three, and Barton Township, so all three of those wind farms, if they went, if they were upgraded by ten percent in height, that puts them into the Deer Creek turbine category.
Right, and that's a major change when they originally built.
It's a, it's a material change on the distance multiplier, um, it's not a material change, a couple hundred feet. But we don't know what it does for...
Yeah, and that's, in some respects, I can, I can sit there and say, you know, that up to ten percent, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be permitted, but has to be, you know, voted on by the supervisors.
See, and they're, they're asking for a...
And I, I, and I, I, I'm not gonna argue about it to be right and honest, but...
To me, I personally think they're gonna be, I personally think if they can come in and say, well, we want an eighteen percent bigger windmill and all the neighbors agree with it, like they think they will, it's not gonna be a problem, so these changes are irrelevant. But they have to prove it and sign it, that's not us, they live there.
Well, the, the problem is today, if you upgrade some of those, they can't be setbacks of the property lines. No, I mean, they physically cannot make the setback of the property line because the base is too close to the property line.
I'll make, of course, a lot of their argument was everybody down there...
You're saying that in that case it should not be upgraded?
Well, I'm just saying, there, there's gray area over there, and I don't, I, I don't know that, well, you know, do you say you can't upgrade this because of that and that's the only thing is you're, that, that base is five foot two close to the road? You know, it, it just, I, I'm just throwing that out.
That's why, I mean, it, it's many of those reasons why I think the, um, no upgrades that change the physical structure.
Yep.
Right, um, without permitting, because it forces it to go through that permitting process to determine what are the impacts? Does this now pose a safety hazard?
Right, right.
Et cetera, et cetera.
No, I, and I get that, and, and I don't, my question is, is, yeah, do you allow them a percentage? Or do you require that the, the towers can't be changed out without permitting, you know, because most of those towers are way graded, et cetera, and, you know, I don't... But to me, this is where the, let the supervisors argue this one, because I, I'm, I'm good with our original draft of, hey, it's there, you can, you know, it's like I told, I was arguing with Merlin Barnes, excuse me, and I said, you know, there's no reason I can't take a square body Chevy, throw in a brand new three fifty that's fuel-injected, and...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they do all that.
That is more efficient than six X A three fifty Q.
Yeah, it, it doesn't change the outside parameters.
Right.
Or the sound, or whatever. From my understanding, when most of these towers are built, assuming you're not getting them bigger, they're supposed to be good for two or three remodelers.
Correct, yeah.
But that's not if you make them bigger.
No, remodeling is just adding new guts, adding a new dead cell.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm making it bigger, it doesn't have anything to do with the power output, it has to do with the physical stuff.
And I'm good with the fact that you gotta repermit. You know, if you make it bigger, repermit, now, you want to say one percent, you want to say five percent, that you don't have to repermit? Or ten? I'd let them argue about it, I'm, to me, it's, as long as it's the same size, go ahead.
And see, and that's, that's where I've been going back to. We don't want to take anything you got, but we obviously want to keep these things going.
Exactly.
Like, you know, obviously, but because of the changes in times, the changes in science, the changes in health, the changes in the population out there, somewhere there has to be a line drawn, and like I said, is it two percent, five percent, twenty percent? Are you gonna give them a one-time five percent? No, or just re...
Just every time?
Yeah, because then, then it's a runaway trend again, and I don't think that's right to do to your neighbors, especially with the newer health concerns, and, I mean, my God, when they built them, they're pretty big, okay? So let's make it more personal, let's not say anything about them, let's think it about me. Yeah, they came and sat at my coffee table and said, yeah, we're gonna give you a windmill, you're gonna get all this money, and then did the same thing everybody else did, oh, this is great. And then when the development finished it, my three windmills are gone. But I was already in favor of it, so I didn't talk out against the neighbors, and boy, would I know, because we are suffering from these things.
So what about this language here, commission comments?
But then that's, that's not giving the protections like for the sound, making sure that they're...
New investment.
Okay, so what you're saying is basically we're gonna give you a one-time ten percent increase as long as it doesn't violate the new standards? Okay, there you go. Okay, but there again, you said, what was the ten percent difference?
So with the top of Iowa, two, three, and Barton wind farms, they're three ninety-nine. If you go fifteen percent, it takes you to the Deer Creek turbine heights at four fifty-nine. If you do ten percent, it's four thirty-eight.
We're kind of shooting middle ground there, we're giving them something, but...
Well, that's, that's what we don't know, I mean, is, is a four hundred, or a three hundred, or a four hundred and ten foot tower having a lot more efficient and quieter than the current one there, I don't have a clue, but...
There again, I'm just, I'm just, I couldn't care how big they make them. I just want to make sure they're not violating their neighbors again, this is a big change.
And that's what I'm saying, that's a big thing. Now they gotta... So, I, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I mean...
It sounds reasonable.
Okay, one other one, um, as I was thinking about this, this is not from the supervisors. This is something that I was thinking of as I was going through this. We know that Invenergy is still working on their project. Yeah, they've still not selected their turbines, they're still playing around with the location, but we, we know they want to move forward. Their, the requirement in the ordinance right now talks about the review process by a variety of agencies that have to be done. I get the thinking that some of those reviews, some of those agency reviews, they're reviewing things against, um, Eagle Nest as an example, DNR, Eagle Nest, wildlife areas, those things can change year to year. Some of the other things, like archaeological sites, Iowa DOT, those things don't change dramatically year to year. So this would propose a waiver if Invenergy did get permitted, you know, if they were going forward through permitting, it would allow them not to have to redo the reviews by these half a dozen or so agencies as a part of their permitting process, because whatever these agencies reviewed a year and a half ago is not gonna have changed next year. We don't have to recommend this, this isn't something, like I said, that the supervisors came up with, but as I was going through this stuff, I thought, well, you know, if they go through the permitting process, there's really no value add to have them go through these guys again within two years of already doing it.
Yeah, is there? And at what point does the data become out of date?
Right, and for these things, the odds is gonna be out of date.
Yeah, and this is specifically worthwhile?
Yes, specifically worthwhile when, specifically these eight agencies.
I can't disagree with the, that you would say, okay, you have to go redo all this because in, in the ordinance, that had to be done during the time, and you're saying, they've already done it.
Right.
Well, we'll take what you got.
Right, yeah, because they, the ordinance was talking about within a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah.
If they've already done it, they don't have to redo that.
I have no problem with that.
So one of the notes I made is, as we were talking... So one of the notes I made as, as we were talking...
Which is what we've said. That's really all I care about, is, is that safely away from my kids playing in the field? And if the answer's yes, okay, then it comes back to, now we have health concerns of, is that at my house? And you, you know, and you're gonna say, well, it should be on my whole property.
At least my acres.
You know, and I get it, we can sit here and argue all day with supervisors and, and where that is. Obviously, they're saying no, but...
Well, we assume that's, yeah.
Well, I do, okay? So, anyway.
I guess, I guess I'm good with it, because, so, so we've told them that we, we believe that our sound should still go to property line.
Yes.
Yep. And not participating, zero flicker, zero flickers, for the, okay, but I wanna, I wanna make sure that it is for occupied building, meaning the entire acreage, not just the building, because we had some talk about that. The sound and flicker to be your entire acreage, not your entire farm, your entire acreage, like what's on the...
They're saying that the mission stands behind the original guidance as it pertains to protection of property rights and opposed to moving to protections and strictly applying to buildings with regard to sound.
Yep.
And we said the same thing for flicker. We stand behind the original guidance or opposed to moving and to strictly applying to buildings. So, flicker and sound, we're saying we are property line, not buildings. Safety setback, we're okay with adjusting, well, first of all, we stand by our original language, but, we're okay if they adopt Lowberg's change of 1.25 or manufacturer safety distance.
Yeah, we totally agree.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to double check, especially with the sound, especially since you're there.
Okay? Right, that's all that we have there, unless anybody has anything else. I will go through this, make sure that I don't have... I don't know what happened there.
Be safe.
Uh, yeah, I'm keeping safe. It's not... Make a selection, or...
Which, I'm okay with the document we read through, I'm, I'm okay as, as it stands. So, did we wanna, I'm, you know, I guess, I'm gonna put a motion on the table to accept as we changed it?
We haven't really changed it, we, we give them...
Our recommendations.
We give them our recommendations based on what we already recommended, and we'll hold it down. We already did our due diligence, had county input, and input from all the organizations in the county and other entities, and built our original ordinance that we all felt was as fair as we could get. And now we're trying to appease their changes. I don't think there's nothing going on, it's just our opinion on their opinion. We didn't really change anything. Because we're still stating that we like our original ordinance. Basically.
Well, yeah, we're saying we like our original ordinance, but we're commenting on their changes.
Yeah, exactly, so there's nothing going on.
Well, yeah, there is. Yeah, because this is getting submitted to the supervisors from us, so David was making a motion to approve the commission comments as we just drafted this evening.
I would second.
So, David has motion, Dana has seconded approving the commission comments as we drafted this evening. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I will go through, hopefully a save is just blank on my screen right now. Otherwise, I'm gonna be watching the video and typing as I go.
Oh, yeah, your view's important.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
It's all I'm saying, so...
All right, so I will get on the, I'll notify Jackie tomorrow that I need to be on the supervisor's agenda for Monday. We'll give them this on Monday, and hopefully, we'll go through it during the week. And then they will discuss, debate, and vote on their changes on 15.
Hey, just a couple of quick things, are you guys setting another meeting? Or not, right now?
So, the next meeting, the, with our monthly schedule, would be December 1st. Right now, we have pushed the work on the development plan, we've pushed that off until next year.
Yep.
Unless there's something that comes back from the supervisors, I would suggest that we tentatively, you know, we, we have our monthly meetings on the first Wednesday of each month, which would be December 1st, but as of right now, I don't think that we need one for December. So, our next meeting then would be January 5th.
Perfect. And then a motion to adjourn, that's all I really need.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So, Justin made the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Todd decided he wanted to leave. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Yep, thank you.
This didn't go at all like I thought, I thought we was gonna... We have always hearing you so, it's a little hard.
Well...
You know, I, because I, I wanted to know... I wanted to know why you think this and why that, but see, that's what I am, I'm a ten, I try to make good decisions.